Hello, everybody, and welcome to this regular meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of San Rafael, California. Today is Tuesday, January 11th, and this meeting is now called to order. First order of business, I'll request staff to call the role for commissioners who are present and not.
Yes, Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Higman.
Here.
Commissioner Mercado.
There.
Commissioner Saudi.
Here.
Vice Chair Privatalli.
Here.
And Chair Samusi.
I'm here. Great. Next, we'll move on to the order of the agenda. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda? I do have one. Board member Saudi has asked to recuse herself from the North Gate project. So I suggest moving this one to the end and move voting for the new chair ahead of that. With the knowledge that the term of the new chair will take effect for the next meeting. So with that in mind, next we'll move on to the meeting procedures. Staff will relay instructions on how to participate in tonight's virtual meeting.
Yes, thank you, Chair Samusi. This time, well, everyone has their cameras turned off, so thank you, and I'd like you to keep your cameras off until your item is called. If you are participating by telephone tonight and wish to provide public comments, and I'll be repeating this. You will press star nine when the chair opens the public comment period, and that will raise your virtual hand. If you are just attending, well, virtually not on the phone, you just use the raise the hand icon at the bottom of the screen. However, if you are phoning in, once it's your turn to speak, you will press star six to unmute yourself. You will have up to a maximum of three minutes to speak. The time will be determined by the chair. Based on the amount of attendees and participation. If you are, this meeting is also being recorded and streamed live to YouTube. Viewers are welcome to attend by telephone by calling 669-900-9128. And entering the meeting ID, which is 872-0645-4435, and then pressing pound. Also may watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda. And if you submitted comments prior to the meeting by email or letter, it has been forwarded to the planning commission. At least all those received before 4:45 PM this afternoon. Closed captioning is available for this meeting, and the link is on YouTube. Thank you.
Thanks, Leslie. Let me now describe the meeting procedures. We'll start with a staff report. Then we'll hear from the applicant. The applicant will have a maximum of 10 minutes to present. Members of the public will then be invited to speak. People on the conference call can speak when they receive notification that they have been asked to unmute themselves. Based on the number of participants here tonight, the public will have two minutes to speak. Commission will then have the opportunity to ask questions of staff, applicant, or public after each segment. We will then close the public hearing and bring the matter back to the commission for comment or discussion and action if necessary. Anyone with an urgent communication on a topic that is not on the agenda may address the commission at this time.
To comment again on anything not on the agenda. To raise a hand if you're dialing in, please press star nine. Otherwise, use the raise the hand icon at the bottom of the screen. And I see no one wishing to speak.
Okay, great. We will now move on to the consent calendar. Tonight's consent calendar has two items. First are the minutes from December 14th, 2021. For that, for that San Rafael Planning Commission meeting. Before we move forward, do any of the commissioners object to this item remaining on the consent calendar? Okay, no objections? Do any of the members of the public object to this being a consent item?
And if there's any objections, you just have to raise your hand. Again, use the star, excuse me, star nine. If you're phoning in or the raise your hand icon. I see no objections.
Okay, so I believe we'll need to take a call of approval among the commissioners for this one. Is that correct, Leslie?
No, what we'll do is we'll see if the second item stays on consent and then do a vote on the consent calendar.
Because that's what you meant. Okay, cool. So next, we'll move on to the second item. This is the Tuscornia Marsh Restoration Project. Before we move forward, do any commissioners object to this item remaining on the consent calendar? Okay, see no objections. Do any of members of the public object to this being a consent item?
So again, if you object, meaning that you wish or have objections to the project, if you wish this project to be approved, no need to raise your hand. But if you have objections, please raise your hand by using the star nine if you're phoning in, or use the raise the hand icon at the bottom of your screen. And I see no objections.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. If, are there any commission comments or edits? And hearing none, I would entertain a motion at this point.
I'll motion to approve the consent items.
That is Commissioner Saudi, correct?
Correct.
This is Commissioner Higman. I'll second the motion.
Is there any discussion on this? Okay, if not, I'll move on to a roll call. Staff, could you please conduct roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Higman.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
I was not at the December 14th hearing, so can I abstain to that item on the consent calendar? And yes, to the second item. Thanks.
Commissioner Saudi.
Yes.
Vice Chair Privatalli.
I was also absent from the last Planning Commission meeting, so I'll stand on the first one and vote yes for the second.
Okay, and Chair Samusi.
Yes. All right, so now we will move on to tonight's action items. So we'll jump on to the Tuscornia Marsh Project. So this is the Tuscornia Marsh Restoration Project.
That was just to prove done.
Yeah. Okay, so I can go straight to number three?
Right, but if you change the order, we'd go straight to four.
Okay. All right, so let me jump down to this. Hold on. Ah, here we go. Okay, Annual Meeting 2022, sorry about that. All right, so this is for the Annual Meeting of the Planning Commission to include election of officers. And review of Planning Commission rules and procedures, and then finally, selection of liaisons to DRB meetings. So for this, I'll ask the staff to provide a staff report.
Yes, so as the chair mentioned, I've actually added a fourth item. So this is to elect the new chair and vice chair. And consider and accept any proposed changes to the Planning Commission rules and procedures. As well as select commission liaisons to the DRB for 2022. And in addition, I provided the scheduled meetings for the Planning Commission. And either now, I don't know if you had time to review them, but if you see anything that falls at the time of a religious holiday, or if I got a date wrong, please let me know either now or in the future, just send me an email, please. So I'm going to take these one by one, if that's okay. So as part of the staff report, you received Exhibit A, which shows the existing commissioners as well as their terms. As you are aware, we are down a commissioner as Commissioner Lupamirsky has resigned and that that space has not been filled. And traditionally, the commission has elected the chair and the vice chair based on a tenureship. With nobody being able to be chaired twice in a row. So based on the history, this year, as you all know, we have Chair Samusi. As well as Vice Chair Privatalli. And if we were going to continue the process of going in order of tenure. The candidate or the choice for chair would be current Vice Chair Privatalli. And the Vice Chair would be Commissioner Saudi. So staff recommendation is to move forward with the with the kind of rotation schedule based on tenure. However, this is your commission, so you may feel free to offer up any other options.
Yeah, I think one consideration that I recall discussing with Ally earlier was that since Vice Chair is part of the housing element piece, that I think there was a there was a some sort of convention about not having the chair also be part of that. So that was, there was a recommendation there to swap the order somewhat for for recommendation for the chair. Now, again, folks can consider that or not if they so choose.
I won't be offended by that.
Okay. I think, I think if you're Privatalli, do you feel like you have the time to, or you'll be able to attend enough meetings to be the chair? Because I think it'll work as long as there's you have the, you have the time, the ability to prepare for both and keep present.
I think so, but I'm not opposed to someone else being chair. If someone would like to be chair, that would be fine with me.
I think Commissioner Mercado really wants to be chair by that grin on his face.
Yeah, I like how it says part of 2020. I'm pretty sure I did a full term, but
I was copying from the last report.
Yeah, I like that. That was a nice little subtle. No, I think it's a rite of passage that all of these amazing commissioners that are on our group should go through prior to Chair Samusi and I getting the privilege again.
You might want to do more than partial next time, though.
Well, I'm fine being chair if you'd like you to be, but Commissioner Saudi, I don't want to prevent you from being chair.
I'm happy to be Vice Chair. I think I'm fine with the layout. I just want to make sure we're we're being considerate of your your commitment.
I think I can do it.
Is that a motion?
That's a hint from Leslie.
Should I? Okay. Only promotion that next year Commissioner Privatalli Chair and Commissioner Saudi be, is it Vice Chair? Is that the title?
Yeah.
And that we continue the same tenure being the subsequent years.
I have a second for that.
This is Commissioner Higman. I'll second that motion before Commissioner Privatalli changes his mind.
Yeah.
All right. So I'll take a vote. I'll do a roll call vote, if that's okay. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Higman?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Saudi?
Yes.
Soon to be Chair Privatalli?
Yes.
And Chair Samusi?
Yes.
Awesome.
Okay.
Thank you, and I apologize. I didn't have that discussion with Ally, so I went rolling forward. The next item is consideration of revisions to Planning Commission rules and procedures. And when I sent out the the brief staff report that you got, and it wasn't till afterwards when I was doing the same thing for the DRB, I actually do have a recommendation that I'd like to read. Which is it's to conclude one minor procedural change to be in concert with city council procedures. Which is in Section 1, Order of Meetings, Item 2, Presentation or Hearing of Proposal D, Rules of Testimony Number 3. Also found on page 6 of Exhibit 2. Staff proposes to add the explicit language that the chair has the discretion to both extend and limit the time from three minutes. And my recommendation would be, I'll read it, since I apologize that it's not in writing, I'll read what it says and I'll read my recommendation. It currently reads, persons presenting testimony to the commission shall be limited to three minutes for their presentation. An extension of this time may be granted at the chair's discretion. Actually, I'm not sure if I read that right. So my recommendation is that it shall be limited to three minutes for their presentation. This time limit may be extended or limited at the chair's discretion. So that is staff's recommendation, again, to reflect what is actually already allowed as discussed with the city attorney and to be in concert with the city council rules and procedures. And with that, I turn it over to the commissioners.
All right, so at this point, are any questions of staff?
Um, I guess it's a question for the group, including staff. Do we have there been instances where we feel that three minutes is inadequate for to receive comment?
I have not found that in my experience as staff or a commissioner. But that has been my experience, and obviously that you can all provide further input on that as well.
I have no problem giving the discretion. I just don't know if I'm not sure having more than three minutes is necessary, but I'm happy to make it a discretionary item. It just, it just may put us in a position where if somebody is if somebody is taking, needs to take longer. And there is like maybe more of an assertive or aggressive tone, it may put pressure on us to knowing that there's an onus on us to act.
So is this with reference to testimony on a particular item? So we extend it for everybody giving testimony, or would this be on an individual basis?
It is unclear, but my understanding it would be for everybody. And also, to be clear, currently, it, the rules specify that the chair can extend the time. It doesn't actually specify that the chair can limit it. So it already, if you're recommending Commissioner Saudi to remove the extension of time beyond three minutes.
No, I'm not recommending to change what's existing. I'm just, are we, are we, is that what we're voting on? Are we voting on a change to what's existing? I think that's what I'm not, I understood it as a change.
Okay, so let me apologize. I'm going to go to my own instruction. It currently reads person and somehow when I printed this out, now it's on page seven at the top, but it wasn't when I looked online. Persons presenting testimony to the commission shall be limited to three minutes for their presentation. An extension of this time may be granted at the chair's discretion. That's what it currently says.
And the change is just the addition of the limitation?
Correct.
I don't, I don't see a problem with that.
If anyone is okay with that, or has, if anyone wants to make a motion, that would be fine.
This is Commissioner Higman. I will move that we accept the suggested change. Granting the chair the ability to limit discussion on an item.
Commissioner Sam, you'll second the the motion.
Okay, I'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Haveman?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Saudi?
Yes.
Commissioner Privatali?
Yes.
And Vice Chair? Nope. Chair Samutti, sorry. I don't know how I can't follow a list.
Good. Yes, to me as well.
Okay, great. The next item is to volunteer to be the DRB liaison. In the past, you have all signed up for two kind of consecutive months is my understanding throughout the year. My feeling, and you guys can change this as well, is since you are down a Commissioner and we do expect to have a Commissioner before the end of the half year that we want to get them in as a DRB liaison as well, that you would all with the exception of one of you take just one month. One of you would have to volunteer for two. The Chair, so that would be you, current Vice Chair Privatali, would not be a DRB liaison. So if you wanted to sign up as a Commissioner liaison for the month as shown in Exhibit Three, alternatively, we could do the full year and just you all choose, you know, first come, first served, and the new person gets what's left leftover. That's another option. Else we'll do the second part of the year come June.
Okay.
And to assist you, if you want to do it this way or either way, Exhibit Four has the the planning meetings for 2022. So if you know you're going to be in Paris for the month of August or whatever.
I have a question. Why does the DRB meetings? Why does the calendar only go to June?
So again, this for the DRB sign up liaison, I thought since we are down a planning Commissioner who we hope will be on board by June, that they can then have, you know, maybe not just get the leftovers, but be integrated to what like we would do this again for part two. It's a little more inconvenient for the those of us here tonight, but it might be more convenient for the Commissioner who's new and may not be available for the dates that are left over.
Got it. So so right now to like to sign up for months that we think work for us?
Correct. If each of you can sign up for one month and if one of you can sign up for two and then the second half of the year, whoever signed up for two only needs one. I mean, doesn't have any. I'm sorry, because it's really twice a year. Sorry. So you'd be done with your service.
Wednesdays are bad for me, so I'm happy to take March.
Okay. I have a pretty busy spring, so I'm happy to take June.
I'll do January and April.
Commissioner Harris can do May. Samutti.
So what is that? February, okay.
Is that good? Okay.
Yes, yes.
And again, just last call, and this goes to the folks, members of the public too. I did my best, but if you see any any inconsistencies, just you know, well, no, that's more DRB. The first, as explained here, if we are the first, second, and fourth Tuesday of the month, but I learned that that is the first week. So two 2000, this year has several months that start on a Tuesday. So actually, if you just look at the month, there's several that actually looks like we're the the first and the third, whatever. But these are the dates. So please comment if you have any questions. And with that, we are done with item number four and can move back to item number three.
Okay, perfect. Let me get my script back up. Okay, so for item number three, this is for the Northgate Mall redevelopment project, the 5800 Northgate Drive.
Commissioner Saudi, before you hang up, and if you could give a verbal reason for your refusal before you before you leave us. Apologize. You're on mute.
Sorry about that. I thought it was just the video thing. I'll be recusing myself this evening from the Northgate discussion due to like a potential conflict of interest. My employer is a active client, has an active client that is the applicant for this project. So unfortunately be having to repurpose myself. Thank you. I'll I'll see you guys good evening.
Okay, have a good evening. Okay, I can jump back unless Leslie, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry about that interruption.
All good. All right. So this item is for the Northgate Mall redevelopment project. This is on 5800 Northgate Drive. This is a scoping meeting for the notice of preparation for an environmental impact report for a rezone to the planned development zone, a use permit, an environmental and design review permit, and a tentative map to allow the comprehensive redevelopment of the existing mall into a new phased mixed-use development with retail and approximately 1,443 residences on a 44.76 acre site. So at this point, I will request a staff report.
And if I just may briefly introduce Tricia Stevens, who is one of our great contract planners who works with the MIG and who is the project manager for this. So Tricia, onto you.
Thank you, Leslie. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. I am Tricia Stevens with MIG, working on behalf of the city, and I'll be sharing my screen. Can everybody see my screen okay now? Let's see.
Yes.
Does that work? Okay, great.
Well, hold on.
Okay. I'd like to just first say a few words about the purpose of this scoping meeting. And and I'll be presenting, giving an overview of the project and then turning things over to our SEQA consultant. And the purpose of this scoping session is to receive comments from the public and from the planning commission on what should be studied in the EIR, the Environmental Impact Report. This includes potential environmental impacts and resulting from the project and what alternatives should be studied. The purpose is not to discuss the merits of the project or items not related to the EIR, and there are no decisions tonight. I wanted to say our goal is to listen and to record the comments. And if there are questions about process, we can answer any questions if if necessary. So I was going to give a brief overview of the project and then turn things over to Teresa Wallace, who's our EIR consultant. And then we would ask the planning commission to open it up for public comment and then bring it back for planning commission comment on the NLP and on the scope of the EIR. We are not having an applicant presentation this evening. They are here, but they will not be presenting. And then as a reminder, written comments are due by Friday, January 14th at 5:00 PM.
I'm sorry to interject, Tricia. I'm having a hard time seeing your screen. I don't know if other people are. It just looks like a small rectangle.
Yeah, in white screen in the middle of the screen. Yep.
Oh, weird. Okay, let me let me stop and reshare it here just a sec. Let me try it one more time. I did it a little bit differently that time.
There we go. I can see it.
Is this okay now?
Yes.
I don't know what I did differently, but okay, thanks for letting me know. So back in September, the planning commission, the design review board held a joint study session on the project, and there was quite a bit of feedback on the site design and all kinds of different elements of the project. And the applicant is in the process of making revisions based on this feedback. And we will make sure that there is adequate public engagement when the revised plans are submitted. And there will be further ways for public comment on that revised project. But the EIR will evaluate the maximum development potential, and the revisions will be consistent with the scope of the EIR. And and I wanted to say it's not uncommon for projects to be revised and refined as the EIR is in process, as long as the revisions do not expand the potential impact. So I just kind of wanted to set the stage that we we heard everybody about the design of the project. Revisions are in place, but we are proceeding ahead with the environmental impact report. I want to hear about what needs to be studied. So just as a reminder, the Northgate Town Square project is 44.76 acres and it's located just west of Highway 101 along Northgate Drive and Los Colinas Avenue. And in the general plan, it's designated for community commercial mixed use and its own general commercial. The project involves an exciting redevelopment of the Northgate Mall, and it's divided into two phases. Ultimately, the full buildout would include 225,000 square feet of commercial space and up to 1,443 residential units. And on the current plans, 7% of the dwelling units would be affordable to low-income households. And the remainder of the 10% requirement would be met on-site in the subsequent phase or through other other options allowed by the zoning ordinance. And so what here is the demolition plan. And the Phase One would, which is the pink, would demolish the old Sears anchor, the Home Goods store and other outbuildings, and then the the middle part of the existing mall. And then Phase Two, which is the 2040 master plan, would demolish the existing Macy's and the and Kohl's. So this is an outline of the Phase One plan. It involves, I'll just go A, B, C, D, E, F, G here. A is involves the remodeling of the current multi-screen cinema and the addition of small shops. B would be construction of new retail here on the east end with housing above. C would include retaining the Macy's and repurposing the existing mall structure into small shops and a and another major or major retail. D would retain the existing Kohl's and the adjacent small shops and restaurants. And E would be the addition of a town square and and new parking and in the central portion. And F is the addition of new retail paths, restaurants on the north end. And then G is the retention of the existing parking structure. H is the construction of a little over 1,000 dwelling units and six apartment-style buildings up to five stories in height along the southern and eastern end. And I is the proposed affordable housing consisting of 96 units. So that's a that's the first phase. And the second phase, which would be the addition of A here of a town square in the middle part of it. And with the revised plans, all this may change, but this is what's what we have. This is the plans that you heard or considered before, but certainly some changes to all this are being contemplated. I'm just outlining what's the current submittal. And then B would be construction of new retail and demolition of the existing Kohl's. And C would be demolition of the mall and retention of the demolition of the mall and construction of new retail here. And D would be the addition of additional retail paths and restaurants on the north end. And then we and then there would also be additional, whoops, sorry about that, additional residential units here on the northeast section. And so, as I mentioned, the Macy's would be demolished and the Kohl's would be demolished and replaced with new shops and restaurants. So that's an overview of the project. Just a reminder of the proposed entitlements. This would involve a change to the planned development PD overlay zone in order to outline the allowable uses and the development standards. And then there would be a development agreement that sets forth the terms and requirements of the city and the public benefits provided by the developer. Parcel map to divide the property into 11 parcels. A use permit, which is required by the PD overlay zone to address standards for specific uses. And then an environmental and design review permit that addresses the site plan, architecture, landscaping, building design, and other site improvements. And of course, ultimately, there will be a certification of the EIR. So this slide outlines where we steps in the process and where we're at. We did have the formal submittal and initial outreach, and we had the planning commission and design review board study session. And now we are in the EIR phase. And and then in the future, we'll have additional outreach, and there'll be further review by the design review board and ultimately coming back to the planning commission and to the city council for final decisions. And I just wanted to emphasize that our the purpose of this meeting is limited for purposes of talking about environmental, potential environment impacts and what should be studied in the EIR. And there there will be further avenues for public comment on the project in the future. And with that, I will end and turn things over to Teresa Wallace.
Good evening. I'm Teresa Wallace, Principal Planner with LSA. And we're the city's consultant for environmental review of the project, and I'm just attempting to share my screen here. Okay, it looks like it's pulled up, but let me know if there's a problem. So this first slide here is just an overview of the topics that I'll cover in my presentation tonight, including the purpose of the scoping session, an overview of the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA, topics that will be addressed in the Comprehensive Environmental Impact Report or the EIR that will be prepared to evaluate the environmental impacts of the project, and an overview of the environmental review process and schedule. And then after that, I believe we'll turn it over to public comment. So the purpose of the scoping session tonight is to engage interested parties early on in the environmental review process. early on in the environmental review process and to get your thoughts on the topics that should be considered in the EIR. The merits of the project are not being considered tonight. Comments should focus on the range of environmental topics to be considered, any specific issues of concern related to environmental topics, the approach and methods to the analysis, and potential mitigation measures or alternatives that you think should be considered. So a little bit about SEQA. SEQA requires lead agencies that approve projects to identify environmental impacts associated with those projects and then either avoid or mitigate these impacts. SEQA documents are prepared to inform decision-makers so they can look at the potential environmental impacts that are identified and make informed decisions about a project. Again, this means that the merits of the project are not considered in the SEQA process. And the environmental review does not include a recommendation as to whether or not the project should be approved. Based on preliminary review of the project application materials, the city has determined that an EIR will be prepared. And the purpose again of scoping is to inform the EIR analysis. So this slide provides a basic overview of how projects are evaluated under SEQA. This process is used to evaluate each of the 20 topics required by the state SEQA guidelines. For most projects, including this one, the baseline conditions are generally those that exist around the time of publication of the Notice of Preparation, or the NOP. The NOP was published about a month ago on December 9th. So the baseline is essentially the conditions as they exist on the project site today. And that's what we're using to compare the proposed project to. The significance thresholds will be based on the SEQA guidelines, which are established by the state, as well as local and regional policies. The effects of the project will then be compared to the baseline conditions to determine potential impacts. I'd like to point out that the focus of the analysis is on direct physical changes in the environment. And economic and social changes are not considered in a project-level environmental review. So because of the location, size, and scale of the project, it was again determined that a comprehensive EIR will be required. And it will look at the full range of topics required by SEQA, all of which are shown here. So at this point, our work is really just getting underway as we're coordinating closely with the city to fully and conservatively define the project for purposes of the SEQA analysis and to be sure that we have all of the necessary information that we need in order to conduct our analysis. So really, really like to stress that we're early on in the process and we've not yet initiated the EIR analysis. There will be technical studies prepared for the topics of air quality, archaeological and historical resources, energy, geology and soils, greenhouse gas emissions, hazards, noise, transportation and infrastructure, including water supply. Visual simulations that depict the before and after conditions of the project will also be prepared. And all of these technical evaluations will inform the EIR analysis. So finally, the EIR is required to evaluate a reasonable range of alternatives. The alternative should attain most of the project objectives and should avoid or substantially lessen any significant effects of the project. So we don't really identify what the alternative should be until we understand what the environmental impacts are. And we will take your comments into account. You know, if there are any suggestions provided tonight or during the NOP comment period for project alternatives. And no project alternative will be considered, which is required by SEQA. Again, other alternatives will depend on the impacts that are identified. So this slide shows the opportunities for public comment on the EIR, including during public meetings and in writing. We're currently in the first teal diamond there, the scoping of environmental issues. The remaining diamonds are future opportunities to comment, which include at least two more public hearings, which I'll talk about in a minute. And then, as Tricia mentioned, there may also be other opportunities at these or other future meetings to comment on the merits of the project. So this slide just shows the anticipated schedule for the environmental review process. Again, on December 9th, the city issued the Notice of Preparation, which notified interested parties and responsible agencies that an EIR will be prepared. Due to the holidays, the typical 30-day comment period was extended by one additional week. And the comment period ends this Friday, January 14th. And during this time, interested parties are encouraged to submit comments on the scope of the EIR in writing. And tonight, again, is also an opportunity to provide those comments. Over in the next several months, we will prepare the EIR. And a draft EIR is expected to be published sometime in early summer. After the EIR is published, there will be a 45-day public comment period. During those 45 days, interested parties will have an opportunity to review the EIR and submit comments to the city. The city will also hold a public hearing on the draft EIR during that comment period. And at that time, the public can also provide verbal or written comments. So after the close of the comment period, we will then prepare written responses to each substantive comment received on the adequacy of the EIR analysis in what is called a response to comments document. The response to comments document will also include any revisions to the draft EIR, if any are necessary. Together, the draft EIR and the response to comments document will constitute the final EIR. The final EIR will be published and available for review a minimum of 10 days before any hearings are held. Once the final EIR is complete, the city will consider a certification of the EIR. And after that, will consider approval of the project as a separate action. So again, the public may attend these hearings and provide comments on the final EIR. And final EIR certification is currently anticipated in the late fall or by the end of the year. So again, at the risk of being a broken record, this meeting is to engage the public early on in the environmental review process to get your thoughts on the topics that should be evaluated. Tonight is not about the size or the scale or use, design, or any of the project elements. Those will be considered as part of separate meetings. And our role tonight is to listen to your concerns and ideas. We'll be taking detailed notes to be sure that we consider each of your comments fully in the EIR. But again, we encourage all members of the public to submit your comments in writing to be sure that they're fully captured and considered in the EIR. And again, those comments should be submitted before 5:00 PM this Friday. So with that, I'll hand it back to the chair. I believe we'll move on to public comment shortly. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I'm going to circle back to the commission right now. And I'll ask for questions of clarification to either staff or applicant.
I have a question.
Go for it.
Yeah, I understand, you know, the importance of the EIR and how that's a normal part of the process. But I'm kind of surprised that it's happening now before we, before a lot of the, I think, changes that the community wants in Phase 1 of the project have been planned. And I'm just wondering if somebody could comment on a concern I have that essentially the EIR would set a precedent based on the plan that we're looking at now, which doesn't include a lot of the elements that the public clearly wants, like a town square in Phase 1.
I can answer that question. So the applicant team is, has listened to the community and is actively revising its team. A preview of the revised plan, but they're still working on it and gathering feedback. So the answer to your question is no. We are ensuring that the EIR encompasses a project that will take into account the revisions that the applicant is doing. So it isn't locking in the plan that was presented back in earlier this fall that you saw. So I can assure you, the answer to your question is no. The EIR allows that flexibility and the applicant team is working hard on some revisions.
Okay, I have a kind of like a similar follow-up question. I know in a lot of the public comments and also, you know, from discussions during the Planning Commission meetings, I know that there has been some consideration of essentially like associated or ancillary projects that may be outside of the scope of work of Merlot and Guyer, but would support the project, things like a connection to the Smart Train, you know, potentially like the North San Rafael Promenade being completed, work on public transport, or sorry, public transit, like a public transit hub. And even I saw what I thought was a good idea, which was a consideration of a new freeway on-ramp and off-ramp at Marydale to, you know, ease congestion, traffic congestion. I'm just wondering, is it possible for those elements, if the city decides to, you know, work on those to be part of this EIR process? Personally, it seems like it would be valuable and relevant.
I agree. And for that, actually, Teresa, if you can, if you are the SEQA expert, respond to that.
Well, the EIR will look at the impacts of the project as it is proposed. If there are any mitigation measures identified to address those impacts that, you know, might require a new freeway connection or something like that, then the EIR would evaluate the impacts of those mitigation measures. But again, we would, we are only evaluating the project as it is proposed by the applicant at this time.
If I may, I'd like to follow up on Commissioner Cravatelli's first question. So it's going to be incorporating their response to comments made earlier. But we won't have a chance to weigh in on those revisions before the EIR is undertaken. And so won't it lock in their revisions without any comment? Or consideration by the Planning Commission?
So again, the answer is no. The EIR is doing project impacts and there's specificity of projects that don't need to be included in the EIR. You're looking at a map of units. And the EIR is going to do like the umbrella of units that could be included in this project. It doesn't necessarily, if there are impacts that are related to street grid pattern, there shouldn't be specific impacts that are related to street grid pattern or connection. So again, it, projects do morph and change to respond. If there is a really drastic change, then yes, we would have to go back and do the EIR. But it isn't the other way that the EIR locks in the project. So we are moving forward with a more broad umbrella EIR to, because this is the beginning of the project. So we are moving forward that way so that the broad umbrella will capture kind of the, dare I say, worst-case scenario environmental impact to be able to accommodate modifications to the project plan. And I don't know if Tricia or Teresa, you want to add anything to that?
Okay, thank you.
I was just going to add that we do anticipate additional public review and community review of the revised plans. We haven't really determined what that schedule is and exactly what it's going to look like. But we do anticipate that the revised plans will be fully vetted with the public and with the commission.
I would just add, if I may, that again, we're looking at sort of a maximum building envelope, maximum development potential in the EIR. And because the EIR process is relatively long, you know, it's well into a year, it's fairly common for projects to undergo refinements and revisions throughout the EIR process. And so we're being sure to, as Leslie said, be conservative in what we're looking at. And that's all I have to add.
I guess one more question for Teresa. You know, in reading the public comments, I don't know if you've had a chance to read them yet. But there are a lot. There probably could be over 100 different ideas and requests. And, you know, there is a lot of consistency, I would say, which is great. But there is quite a diversity, quite a range of asks. And I'm just wondering how your process, you know, incorporates or potentially doesn't incorporate those asks into the EIR. You mentioned project alternatives. I wouldn't say that any, there's no one, no one's talking about a really substantial alternative, like turning the whole thing into a park or a university or anything like that. But there are just so many different alternative features, I guess is what you would say, for the project. Does the EIR take those into account?
Yeah, so as I mentioned before, we'll conduct our analysis. We'll identify the impacts. And the purpose of the alternatives is really to reduce or avoid environmental effects. But there are other considerations, right? So when we identify the impacts, we'll go back and discuss to city staff an appropriate range of alternatives that will lessen impacts. That will be the alternatives that we identify for full evaluation. We'll consider the alternatives that have been recommended or identified by the public and will probably come up with some sort of morph of suggestions that achieves the goals that we're looking to. And that is reduce environmental impacts. And we also have to remember that the alternatives that are evaluated must achieve to some degree the basic project objectives that have been identified. And those will be presented in the project description. And they're developed in coordination with the city and the project applicant and the SEQA consultant. And then the alternatives analysis will also identify alternatives that may have been considered but weren't fully evaluated and the reasoning behind that decision.
Okay.
I think, okay, I have the project applicant here who will just, I think it will be good to inform the commissioners as well as members of the public kind of their estimated timeline for submitting revised plans. So Stephen?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
So first of all, we've received all the comments. We believe we address, you know, 80, 85% of the comments on our new plans. And then those plans will come out publicly here in the next three or four weeks. And we're very proud of that because working with a lot of the constituents and understanding what they want, we have reevaluated the plans. We've also worked with our environmental team to make sure that everything is captured within the environmental documents and moving forward. So I rest assure you that we will make sure that everything that we are studying and moving forward with is captured within that document because we want to make sure that that's the way moving forward. So we are very excited to show the public what's going to change and not to. And not to show our hand, but one of the biggest comments was moving the town square from 2040 to 2025. And I think we're going to do that. And that's one of the biggest things that we will move forward. We understand traffic is an issue that, that everyone talks about. Our preliminary review is there's minimal increase in traffic in the, in the morning, none in the PM. But we, we believe this project for the community is going to be fascinating moving forward. So I'll keep it there, Leslie, and send it back to you.
Thank you, Stephen.
Any further questions? From the planning commission? Okay, I'm hearing none. I'm, I'll open up the public hearing and I'll ask staff to open up public comments.
Yes, so if you wish to speak, any of you know, right, use the raise a hand icon at the bottom of the screen. And if you are dialing in, please press star nine on your phone. When I call you, you will get two minutes. And as mentioned, if you have more to say, and even if you don't have more to say, if you can provide comments in writing to us in addition to speaking, that, that would be great. So first up is Tyler Nielsen.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay, first of all, I just want to address, I think this plan, I, I think this is going a little out of order. But anyways, I think, I think one thing that really needs to be looked at is the use of who's using the mall. That's going to primarily be teenagers from Terrelande High School, after school, and surrounding neighbors. And I think that really there needs to be a lot more recreational things added to this. The, the whole reason the mall is practically dead is because we've lost all of these old recreational things we used to have. I mean, at one point was an arcade at the mall decades ago. Not sure what happened to that. But putting more things to just attract people and recreational for the public and people, a pool, arcade. I mean, the, the ice skating rink that's put up every year. I mean, just put a rollerblading rink there that's year round, something that can operate fully. I, I think another thing is the, the amount of housing units you're proposing is a little large for the area given. People like, at least people that I go to school with and that go there, people like how it's open and the area. And this plan seems to condense everything into a lot tighter. Another thing is people like noise. Me, myself and some friends will, will sometimes get a speaker and we'll go. And there's places where you can just play your music and stuff because there's so much room. And it sounds like if with this, it's like putting these, all these housing units, that's not going to be the thing anymore. I, I see my time's up.
Yeah, if you could wrap up, that would be great.
Yeah, sorry. I, I think the, the plan overall should be rejected and redrawn, taking into account more public stuff. And I think you guys should consider going directly to Terrelande High School and talking to the students there and asking what people want. Cause I can assure you, that's where a lot of your money is going to come from, from this mall. And that's where most of the use is going to be coming from. And I think that, yeah. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Next up is Matthew Hartzell. Matthew, you have two minutes.
Hi, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, thank you. I'm Matthew Hartzell, Director of Planning and Research at WTB TAM Transportation Alternatives for Marin. And I want to thank everyone involved for thinking about how to transform our community and county and, and become more sustainable and, and provide more housing. This, this plan is a good step in the right direction, but there's a lot more that needs to be done. And I am worried that we're moving forward with this EIR process too fast and that there hasn't been time to fully incorporate a lot of the important revisions that I think still need to be made. So I want to, I want to keep it on track and on agenda, which is about the EIR scoping. So I think the best way for me to do that is to say, I hope that the, that the EIR will include alternatives that, that look, that, that improve the non-motorized mobility with both within the project site and without. And connecting the project site to the surrounding community, to the North-South Greenway, to the North-South Bike Way, to the North Gate Promenade. And I think it's absolutely vital that you include a much more comprehensive non-motorized transportation orientation for this project is the center of Marin's sustainable multi-mobility grid. All, all the major bike routes in the county converge at this point. And right now it's far too automobile, automobile oriented. There's far too much automobile parking spaces. You need to seriously look at the impact that all of these parking spaces are going to have on climate change, on greenhouse gas emissions, on traffic. And you need to include alternatives that, that replace a number of automobile parking spaces with bicycle parking spaces. We recommend you should include at least two secure biking, bike parking spaces for every housing unit. Okay, my time's up, thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Next up is Claire Helen, Helen Beck.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I want to thank all of you for serving in this sometimes thankless endeavor. And I truly recognize that it comes from the goodness of your hearts, all of the planning commissioners. It's interesting that the project was revised to include more units, but we don't have any input on the new alternative. And I'm really not sure how we can start this project without any alternatives to discuss. However, I'm heartened to hear that the new town center will be in phase one, but how big will it be? It's miniscule right now and I believe it's unconscionable that the city of San Rafael may allow this development of a thousand new rental units and likely two thousand to three thousand new residents in phase one. And they would have to move into a community that has no outdoor space for them. No space for children, pets, two substandard pocket parts each a half a mile away. Please require that the creation of a true town center space that will serve our new neighbors in their pursuit of a healthy lifestyle and create a gathering space to welcome them into our existing community. Also, providing no missing metal opportunities for entry level homeownership such as town homes and condos is openly oppressive and no way to create diversity of income, race and profession in our community. So those are two very important points in my mind. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Claire. Next up is Shirley Fisher. Shirley Fisher, you have two minutes.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. Can you hear me yet? Can't hear me. Yep. I would like to go over some of the history dealing with this project's place and how that pertains to the alternatives that should be studied in the EIR. In October nineteen ninety-six, two hundred San Rafael residents spent their day at Terrelande High School, starting a blank student paper and they came up with the essential things they wanted in the community over the following decade, including primarily a sound sensor at North Gate to be essential to the community and a North San Rafael promenade to connect to east and west side of the city. This was followed by five years of work by twelve member VR committees, vision action committees. They refined a plan, they held workshops to create conceptual designs for the North San Rafael promenade. All of this work was staff and funded by the city. Hundred twenty-five thousand dollars was spent on consultants in nineteen ninety. Plus staff plans with these staff members over multiple years. The principles in the North San Rafael vision have been reiterated by General Plan twenty twenty, General Plan twenty forty, and they should be the guiding principles of designing the North Gate Project, the third alternative. The, the vision process also had the festival that was followed by thirteen public meetings, focused sessions with forty-three neighborhoods and school campuses. Individual functional centers of the two thousand five hundred comments on light, dislikes and design changes. These were all integrated into the vision. So this is not the type thing, this is something the community has been asking for for twenty-five years. Central parking lots do not meet this vision. I think it's very interesting that the applicant has made promises for over a year that the plans are going to be revised, but yet it's the same plan again. I don't know how you do the EIR without knowing what the project is. That's my comments. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Next up is Bill Carney.
Hi, Bill Carney, Sustainable San Rafael. We would, we consider that the following five areas of environmental impact alternatives and mitigations are essential for comprehensive EIR and a successful project. Number one is aesthetics. The heart of the proposed development is its namesake town square. The draft EIR needs to include an alternative with a central green space scaled and designed to immediately establish the identity of the entire site. We suggest included in that would be locating parking under the new buildings such as the cinema, et cetera. Ringing the, the central open space with lively cafes and restaurants. Framing the green space with a perimeter promenade and designing the green space for both casual play and frequent performances and then committing to create and support, to curate and support its activation. Number two is energy and greenhouse gas emissions. Climate change is the greatest environmental threat we now face. Project and a project of this scale inherently poses a significant environmental impact. The EIR should assess, assess how the new North Gate meets the objectives of the CCAP of San Rafael, the Climate Action Plan. And also include specific straightforward mitigations that would achieve those goals, including all-electric HVAC and other building systems. Commitment to using only fossil fuel electricity to power them and EV stations sufficient to meet twenty forty levels. Also with land use and planning and population and housing and transportation. We have submitted comments and we urge your consideration of those and their inclusion in the EIR. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Your comments were received. Thank you. Next up is Adolfo. Adolfo, you have two minutes.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Great, my name is Adolfo Medved. I have been a resident of Terrelande for thirty-five years. I would like to see a balanced combination of rental and owner occupied units in the new development. Having a single landlord manage such a big slice of our community is very risky. While having a significant portion of the residents occupied by the owners ensures that the equity in the properties stays in our community and a more stable population. That's all I got.
Thank you, Adolfo. Next up is Scott Terrick. Apologize if I'm just pronouncing your name there.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I, I would like to start saying I've been a resident here for nearly fifteen years. I've, would like to start off by saying I like to repeat what Commissioner Prevaltali mentioned is that this is basically an EIR before the actual project. And I think there are a couple of different things to look at this is that as we develop this, you're only evaluating it as is proposed, but not necessarily the revised version. It's also very limited in scope. And if you're only looking at the minimum or the maximum benefit that there is, then if things change, you're going to have to go back and redo it. I think there's other comments here that's been saying that's been premature and I would have to agree. The other half about this EIR is it was mentioned that it should look at, that the EIR is going to look at the maximum potential. And I think that's where the fault is. I think we should also look at what is reasonable. We are looking at a development next to a historic residential area with high layers who are single stories. And the proposal started off with four, four stories. And I think I caught Tricia saying that the, the most recent proposal is up to six stories. And I think it keeps growing and growing. And I think that is of a concern for everybody as it relates to existing surrounding communities and residential areas. The other half is if you do build up the height, then you're going to have kind of like a canyon effect of single story residents next to six, five story buildings and, or five or six story buildings. And that is just too large for this community. So I'll leave it there. I've seen running out of time, but I just want to make that point. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. Next up is Brian. Brian, you have two minutes to speak.
Yes, hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
So I think all my topics are on point with the EIR. One is connections to non-motorized transportation such as should undoubtedly be a priority. Anything from short-term rental scooters to connections to the bike path, to smart train. Dog park would be extremely beneficial, not just to this project, but also to the local community. Potential use or maybe required use of proclaimed water for all landscaping purposes around the facility. Maybe even working with the owners of the land around the Quail Hill to improve the ecosystem and the habitat over there on the western flank of that hillside below the mountaintop office building. That may be outside of your scope developer, but you know, it would be a good, a sign of good faith to the community to help beautify that mount, that hillside. Given that the EIR topics include population and housing, I'm wondering if this committee takes into consideration the additional projects within North Gate such as North Gate Walk, which is up to two to, I think, three hundred units. I know that's kind of on the shelf, but it could come back when that developer is ready, as well as the previously approved YMCA development, which is, I think, two hundred and sixteen units. We're talking about almost, almost two thousand units being added to Terrelande. Also a question on the EIR, including topics of public services. Does this communication, does this commission take impacts of schools into this consideration of the EIR? I don't think so, but I thought I'd ask. Transportation. Committee or the, I think the developer mentioned that the project study was, found that it may not have any impact in the mornings. I was wondering if maybe the committee would put in a restriction of when that traffic study is done. Was that done post-pandemic or pre-pandemic? Pre-pandemic, if you've lived in the community, getting on the freeway is a nightmare, it always has been. Getting off the freeway is not so bad. So, and, and lastly here, just real quick, sorry for my time. I'm wondering if the developer can consider putting any CCNRs or restrictions on tenants or owners to prevent them from turning their units into short-term Airbnb rentals. That one may be outside of the scope of the, of this conversation. But since the developer is listening, I thought I'd squeeze it in there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brian. Next up is Mark Shaw.
Hey, good evening. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Hey, my name is Mark Shaw. I had the privilege of serving the Children of San Rafael as an elected trustee on the Miller Creek School District from two thousand five to two thousand nineteen. Currently, there's two school districts that are affected by this proposed development. One is the Miller Creek School District, the other is the San Rafael City Schools High School District. As both are locally funded, not state funded. Our community relies on local funding from local parcel tax to help pay for the per student fees that we receive. We're Miller Creek School Districts. We're, Miller Creek School District is the lowest funded school district in the county per pupil because of that. Um, I see the proposal offering up eleven parcels. I don't see a proposal that talks to developer fees that would uh, compensate opening up a new campus that runs millions of dollars. The closest is Santa Margarita out by Scotty's Market. Vallecito Elementary, um, behind Safeway. Currently is almost five hundred kids is at maximum, so this would require redistricting with the current plans for this location. Definitely uh, the school districts in north, northern San Rafael provide all the parks and recreation for ninety percent of the residents here north. So if you're looking for a baseball field, a basketball field, any sort of sporting facility, you're not going to find it through city city planning or any kind of city funding. So the the huge hit by not seeing any parks or development for this location or the inclusion of a school on the site. If you're going to bring in potentially hundreds of new students. Uh, right now we have eleven parcels that could probably handle fifteen or twenty kids. So you know, that's about what we get uh, as a comp for the number of parcels we have in our district right now. So eleven would be fifteen to twenty kids. Otherwise, we were not receiving any state funds for that. You understand, not a dollar. All locally.
Thank you, Mark.
Funded through the parcel taxes. Thanks.
Next up is Julie, oh, I'm going to get this one wrong, Schreben, Schreben with the Galinas Waters. And I cannot read the last part of the organization. What's going on here? Hold on. Hold on a second, Judy. I'm making you. This is not working. I am moving on to Kate Powers. Kate, can let her, Mary Judy.
Thank you.
Two minutes.
Thank you. I, Kate Powers from resident of Terre Linda. I have a couple of um, requests. One is that um, this site was um, nominated and uh, as a priority development area by the city and adopted um, by A B A G as such. And I would like included in the project objectives and in the development agreement with the city. The, the um, purpose of a P D A, the purpose of a P D A and and how this project meets that purpose. P D As are places near public transit that are planned for new homes, jobs and community amenities. And they are on plan to help the Bay Area reduce greenhouse gas emissions and begin to solve the region's housing crisis. I, I think that um, this P D A does not meet a transit quality because the smart train's future as a fixed route is not guaranteed. So as a connected community P D A, it is supposed to have committed policies that include mobility options that reduce auto travel. And good public transit is that, is such that is useful not only to the transit dependent, which are a really important population, but also lots of people. I'm concerned about um, traffic and and congestion in the area and how that will be planned for. I'm also concerned about um, infrastructure that will support the community. Both utilities and the physical infrastructure of um, energy, water, how stormwater and drainage will happen, solid waste sewer, but also the social infrastructure, the police, fire, schools, parks and recreation and other public facilities that will be placed, planned for in this area. And I hope the environmental review will include both infrastructure and how this project will um, reduce vehicle miles traveled in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Next up, Judy, I am, I'm going to try this again. Oh, yeah, it worked.
That worked. Hey, thank you. Yeah, I, before, everybody froze and I couldn't get in, so I had to leave and come back, so thank you. Can you hear me now?
Glad you did.
Okay, great. So Judy Schreben, uh, lived in the area for thirty years, actually grew up in San Rafael twenty, thirty years before that. Um, I'm, you have the comments from the Galinas Watershed Council, which I am representing. So of course, our major concern is environmental, the water and the hydrology and the interaction and the integration of the community with the creek and with the planning. I am really concerned that this project is being looked at, as many other speakers have said, sort of in isolation with the current massive development rather than the project that I think the rest of us want to see. I think it also runs afoul of CEQA, which is California Environmental Quality Control, um, Quality Act. Because there are a lot of other projects being proposed for San Rafael in this area. And by not considering all of those projects as one in a sort of master plan way, you run afoul of not looking at the cumulative impacts of all these projects on the current residents and the current environment, the schools, the water system and all that other. So I think that's something that the planning commission should be aware of. There's a possible running afoul of CEQA by not considering all the projects that are currently underway. There seems to be also very truly, very little truly affordable within this plan. And I think that's something the community has spoken out loudly about, that we, we, we need way more and truly affordable, not just Marin County affordable, which we all know is out of reach of mo- most workforce and teachers. And we have requested a larger and more thorough traffic study because this will impact all the residents around, all the uh, intersections, Freitas Parkway, North San Pedro, the neighborhoods, the Meadows, Los Franchitos in the county, Santa Venetia and as well as Terre Linda neighborhoods. So thank you for your time and please read our comments. We've made a number of other really great, we think, suggestions for the planners as they go forward that will bring us into the twenty first century, which would be very nice at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. If there is anyone else who wishes to speak on this item, please use the raise a hand icon at the bottom of the screen. And or if you are phoning in, please dial, oh, now I forgot, star nine. So next is friend, sorry, Fred Penzak. Fred, you have two minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Fred Penzek and I moved here in nineteen ninety nine. I'm a physician in the community, as is my wife. And um, I'm just a little concerned and I, I'm not exactly sure if this is the venue for this, but I, I agree with the first person who commented about using this for open space, you know, the kids around Terre Linda. My concern is, is that this project isn't really designed to improve the lives of the people that live in this community already. My, my fear is that this is just a way that developers are going to make money. And we that live here and have lived here for a long time are going to have to deal with increased traffic congestion. And it's not just on the roads. It's, it's now out on the trails, the mountain bike. It's, it's especially with COVID, it's really gotten out of control. And I see you trying to build, you know, five thousand more people into Marin. This is going to change life in this part of Marin. And I think, I don't know if that gets studied as part of this E I S or I at least need to speak out because I'm worried about that. I don't really have problems with trying to redevelop a property and make it, you know, inclusive uh, to the people that live and work around here. I think that's a great thing. But I'm very concerned that the average person that just lives here already is going to have a worse, a life that is worse because of a massive development and massive housing uh, building. And, no, we lived out, we moved out into the suburbs because we didn't want to live in a dense city. And I just needed to speak out and voice that. And I don't know if this is the right, this is the right meeting, but I at least wanted to say that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Fred.
Of course.
If there is anyone else wishing to speak, please raise your hand. Now I see another, yeah. Cecil is next. Cecil, you have two minutes.
Hi, this is Cecile Nielsen and I second everybody that spoke before me. And um, uh, thank you, Planning Commission, for listening to all of us. Shirley uh, spoke a few minutes ago. And her and I were on the V A committee for many, many years and we spent many, many hours, thousands of hours on this project. Let me start by saying, I think it is very important that our focus be on recreation and health for all. Fred just mentioned uh, the impact. And I'll tell you, if you want to have, get a doctor appointment or with somebody here in Marin, there's a waitlist. That is going to, not just the schools are going to be impacted. Number one, the bicycle and pedestrian path connections need to be upgraded immediately. And now, not before the project starts. Existing trees need to be respected and more native trees be planted. Solar panels on all rooftops, a new park for children. Healthy park for adults with benches, exercise bars, a park that can be used year round. More people means um, we need a new, a new public swimming pool, tennis courts, dog parks, an amphitheater for concerts, indoor track. I think we're going to have to move out of here. There's going to be way too many people. Bike rentals, bike lockers, charging stations, good lighting, but lighting that does not take away from our night skies. Um, and lastly, it is imperative that this development be inclusive of all. That it be a place where people can go to cool off in the hot summer months. A, a place where people can go walking on those rainy and hot days and feel safe. And a place you can ride your bike to and park it in a safe location and go shop, eat, exercise, watch a movie, et cetera. And this is going to have a huge impact on the schools, our hospitals. Please take all that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Cecilia. And there was someone else who had a hand up. Hey, oh, there we go. The next is Kimberly Keith Brown.
Hi, am I, am I on? Okay, um, hi, I'm Kim Keith Brown. I'm the resident of Terre Linda. And I am president of the Terre Linda Homeowners Association Board of Directors. Just appreciate the opportunity to say a few comments. We, our organization and members have had opportunities to engage with Marlon Guyer over the past few months as this uh, proposed project has evolved. And we're really grateful for the applicant's commitment to this type of dialogue. Um, in a letter that we wrote to Marlon Guyer dated April twenty eighth of this, of twenty twenty one, I guess it's not that anymore. We shared what we believe to be the merits of the proposal, namely the elimination of the big box store concept and gas station in favor of a multi-use vision, combination of locally owned retail and much needed residential units and the town square concept that's featured in the very name of the proposal or the proposed development and the vision presented by Marlon Guyer. I, I'm going to focus on that tonight and we will likely write a letter to submit, submit before Friday with more detail. But, and many of you already know, and I think Shirley Fisher commented, the town center has been an important but unrealized element in the North San Rafael section of the general plan for decades and it continues to be in G P, in general plan twenty forty. The, the fact that the current project proposal would postpone installation of what would is a true town center to phase two, uh, I believe significantly would alter the nature of the development with potentially detrimental environmental impacts. I'll just finish by saying there are some excellent alternatives that have been presented. I know you're not at the stage of looking at alternatives, but I strongly encourage Marlon Guyer and the commission to look at these. I'm thinking specifically of responsible, responsible growth in Marin that has done some excellent modeling. I encourage you to look at these as the project rolls out to make sure it stays consistent with its own goals and objectives. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. There's anyone else who wishes to speak? Please raise your hand using the raise the hand icon. Raoul is next. Raoul, you have two minutes. So, Raoul, you're on mute. Unmute yourself.
Okay, uh, good evening. Thank you for all of your work and uh, your dedication. There are a couple of things that I've heard that really resonated. One was, shall we consider the cumulative impacts on current residents? Looking at the E I R. The next is, how does this development actually reduce vehicle miles traveled? And these are just up in questions. And then finally, do any of the commissioners actually live in our neighborhood? Do they have the empathy to experience? Thank Commissioner Profetelli. Do they have the uh, empathy to experience what these changes are, are going to make? Because I've lived here for twenty two years and um, I have seen things get more and more congested. And I really appreciate my neighbors and uh, what uh, what we have to offer and I'd hate to lose that. So, again, I don't, I don't have the answers to the questions, but I'm just throwing those out. So uh, I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Raoul. If there is anyone else wishing to speak, please use the raise the hand icon or if you're phoning in, star nine. Star nine or raise the hand icon. And remember also to submit any written comments to us by five p m. this Friday. I see no one else wishing to participate.
Okay, great. At this point then I'll close public hearing. And um, I guess what we'll do is we'll uh, we'll start with just some general discussion and synthesis of what we've heard. And then um, once we've kind of run its course, I'll just go one by one through each commissioner just to get general thoughts. So at this point, I'll open it up for commissioners to either ask follow up questions or raise any discussion points.
And just, if I'm sorry to interrupt, but just to be clear, this is, you may do that. It is a scoping meeting, so we still want to hear your comments for what the E I R should encompass and what it should be sure to include, so.
Yes, yeah, we're not, we're not.
Forget that part of it, okay?
Yeah, we're not, we're not discussing merits of the project. We're, we're focusing on the, on the scoping piece.
Yeah. Got a couple just questions off the bat and they're actually clarification questions, so probably not scoping questions yet or scoping suggestions. But the first one is around the requested entitlements that were shown in the slide presentation. I'm wondering if um, you know, how, how does that, how do those requested entitlements enter into the picture now? You know, does the work that's done on the I R, E I R somehow solidify those um, requested entitlements now? I'm particularly asking because I noticed that parcels, a parcel, I believe a parcel count or parcel plan was noted in that list. And um, and then when I heard that, you know, the eleven parcels will only allow an additional fifteen, funding for additional fifteen to twenty students. That seems like there could be a gap. There is a gap there. That's problematic.
Tricia, can you answer that?
Yes, um, the proposal is to divide the property into eleven parcels, which would, the parcels would correspond with um, the different housing projects and different major components of the prod- project to um, create um, parcels that can be sold separately. I'm not sure I can answer your question about the school. Can you maybe repeat that?
Well, yeah, maybe, maybe I should save that question for, for after this initial question.
Yeah.
The initial question was.
The question, yeah.
Okay.
So the entitlement as part of the E I R you do or sequence. So the entitlement as part of the EIR you do or sequoia analysis, you do with all the entitlements that are being requested. However, the, whether the project is, you know, 11 parcels at the end or 100 parcels at the end, there should be, yes, it sounds like there may be a different in school impact fee, but that would not impact the, we would take that into account in terms of utilities and, you know, any impact from school. But that, it sounds, it wouldn't limit it to 11. If it needs to be changed in the future, there's a desire to make it more partial. So again, it won't lock in 11 by listing those entitlements.
And so I, I'm sorry, I actually didn't quite understand the first part of your statement. Did you say that the EIR would install the requested entitlements? Was that the term that you used?
No, it is typical in a sequoia analysis, I apologize, to list all the requested entitlements of a project.
Okay.
Mostly that is, is part of, that doesn't limit it or lock those in if those get modified. So again, the EIR is looking at the project impact. So if there is a change in the environmental impact that is related to a change in the entitlement, that would require a change or a modification of the EIR, not again, a limitation on the project itself.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other, any other discussion points? Thoughts from anybody?
Are you looking for questions right now or just sort of general things?
Either or.
I would just highlight sort of beyond my comment, sort of back to staff and, and the, the planning team. I think there was a lot of, I wouldn't say if it was confusion, but questions and inquiries regarding what is the project in comparison to what are related or adjacent or cumulative projects associated or not associated with it. So I think when this comes back, what would be helpful is either a quick note or clarifying how or if not that's related to it, because I think that's just creating confusion. I didn't really get some of the comments regarding some of these adjacent developments going on. They may not necessarily be appropriate to be analyzed in the EIR, but it's a, it's a common theme I heard that I would just recommend, or I would like to see at least it be addressed somehow, because it's not a standard environmental issue. It's more of a clarity, but I think it would really help a lot. And then to Commissioner Protagon's point, the overview of the, the bullet points were really good. But I think when we come back, just maybe an extra slide or two that explains what that process is, because there was also a lot of confusion about the cart and the horse and is the EIR looking at something that's changing? And so I think Theresa and Tricia did a good job in addressing that, but maybe a little formality next time that kind of explains why this is the process of the EIR and how it's sort of standard to look at this entitlement request right now. Again, I just think it, I picked up a lot of questions on the community on that, that maybe would help answer some of that. So those are my two overviews.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I'll, I'll follow up with that. I mean, I, I'm just going to be completely blunt and candid and I, I think that we should slow down the EIR. And the reason that is, is because I don't think that we are providing the consultant, LSA, a, a clear view on what the project is going to be at this time, based on public, public opinion and also on Malone Guyer's own plans to change the project. And, you know, it's not considering the, the additional work that needs to be done around the project and other projects like Commissioner Mercado just mentioned, was brought up by the, the community. So yeah, I mean, I would request to just take, I don't know what it would take, maybe a month, two months, and then initiate the EIR at that time. I know the EIR has already actually been initiated and we're in the comment period, but if there's anything we can do to slow it down, so it's more accurate, I think everyone would be happier about that and benefit from that.
What would be the difference between amending the EIR and slowing it down? The reason why I ask this is that I'm also, I'm also wary of the message that we're sending, not just to this developer, but to other developers in terms of the extent to which pure public opinion is allowed to sort of financially hijack or financially handcuff developers. Because of that, again, yeah, I'm just trying to, I'm just, what I'm trying to do is make sure that we're also balancing the fact that, you know, we can allow for discoveries to happen and amendments to happen, as opposed to slowing down the process and ensuring, you know, or just to ensure that folks who don't actually have a financial stake in the project necessarily get to, get to voice an opinion again, because what we've also heard are feedback that is not necessarily all, all in agreement with each other from the community. So I'm also wary about being overly sensitive to individual points of feedback, as opposed to allowing, allowing discovery to happen within the EIR process and amendments to the project happening and the, the applicant going back and making an adjustment or amendment to the EIR after the fact, after discoveries happened, if that makes sense.
Yeah. I mean, my, my instinct based on really experience with all sorts of projects that I worked on during my professional career, which have been construction projects, financing projects, all sorts of engineering projects, is that it's actually much more difficult to go back and change them after you've received a certain like level of approval or there's like a lot of momentum that's already built up on a previous design than it is just to change them from the beginning. It's, it's much more expensive to go back and change something. It takes more debate. You're, you know, sort of like going, people who, who want to make a change are having to sort of go back and, you know, negotiate and, and ask for compromises to a, a vision that has been established sort of more officially. So my, my opinion, that's the, that's the, that's the basis for my opinion, for wanting to get this right from the very beginning and then move it forward. I think we'll actually encounter far less opposition if we don't create a situation where the plan has to be changed later.
Well, we actually saw this with North Gate Walk. So that's actually why I, I referenced that, is that they actually went through that process. They ended up having to make modifications to the EIR and having a, a second study done. So I mean, even within that immediate vicinity, we, we've seen, we've seen that, that change be made. I mean, that's not discounting the fact that, you know, this is a different project, but I think it's, it's worth sort of keeping in mind to, that, you know, the process you're describing, which makes sense, given the history of this project, is probably more than a month or two, which is why if your proposal here is a month or two, then we may as well, we may as well move forward with the EIR and, you know, in terms of the motions that we, that we create, you know, that's something that we can also incorporate is, you know, either check-in periods or, you know, providing sort of staged, staged review or staged updates for the EIR. But again, I, I'm of the, I'm of the opinion that we, we should be supportive of projects being able to move into these different phases. And if there is additional review that needs to happen or additional feedback, then that's fine. I mean, we can, we can kind of figure out internally how to, how do we structure that? But I'm just, I'm just very wary because I, you know, I know that this particular community, having been through the North Gate Walk, you know, and sort of seeing it firsthand, that I think if we, if we wait for a situation where everyone is happy, then this project will never happen.
Okay, I understand your perspective. I'm not suggesting we wait for, I don't think we can ever wait for a situation where everyone is happy. But I mean, personally, I feel like we're pretty close to a situation where that's a lot better than what's being, what we just, what we saw and what the EIR has been based on. So that's the perspective that I'm coming from. Hopefully we are just a month away, you know.
Yeah.
I would just add, I think that's the point of the conversation tonight. Sorry, Leslie, I'll jump in really quick. I think the intention is to raise these issues so that the applicant has an understanding of the concerns and issues, because if it slowed down a month or six months, if the EIR is inappropriate and there's a lawsuit that challenges it, then that one month or six months is irrelevant to the years of litigation. So it's in everyone's interest to clarify it now, so that we engage with all those issues, so that the project and the environmental impacts are properly analyzed. So what I would say is, I think you buy, you're both correct. There's risk on all of that, but I think it's the community who's raised these issues that hopefully are being synthesized, that the applicant can address and through the mitigation factors, that's going to manipulate the project just out of necessity to advance it. So for me, I think what I heard tonight, like I said, were some overview questions. A, a really interesting comment on this idea of the larger town square, that I, I don't know how to address that or where in the EIR that would be discussed as an alternative, but I think it's something that is very relevant, whether it's the open space, whether it's an aesthetic component, but there seems to be something there. And, and that jumped out at me as well on the site plan, that if this is called the town square, there really doesn't seem to be that hub. That relates to another sort of engagement. How does this tie into the larger community? And I do think the EIR should have some sort of point or analyzing that. There's continuity in this project that I think needs to be brought up and addressed. I picked up a little bit out in the comments, but that's something that to me jumps out. And again, I don't know if this is the biggest project the city has dealt with or in this capacity. So making sure we kind of analyze what this means in relationship to the community, to other projects is relevant, I think needed. And then, yeah, the traffic, I mean, I just think, I, I looked a little bit of that in the study or in the comments with the staff report. With this amount of units, there's going to be really interesting VMT issues. And I think a lot of traffic study with a lot of different variables depending on the times. So that, that was again, another common issue that jumped out from, from the community that I think is something we'll have to address a lot. Those are my main points.
Leslie, you were going to say something?
Well, just, I was wondering if you would be interested, because there has been, as mentioned by everyone here, there has been a little bit of extra concern about the prematurity, like thoughts that this EIR might be premature and some questions about cumulative impacts. And I thought it would be good if we, if we had Teresa Wallace, our sequence consultant in the LSA, kind of addressed this. Just, again, it may not satisfy, and I want to continue with this discussion in the summary because it's very excellent. But if it could in any way answer some of these questions or Teresa?
I don't know if I'll have a more satisfactory answer than, than what I've said before, but I just really want to emphasize that we have initiated the EIR. And what that means is we've begun working on the project description. We were drafting the project description. We're waiting for the updated application materials and plans from the applicant, which I understand are a couple of weeks away. We're going to look at those plans, update our draft of the project description to, to ensure that the current version of the plans are described and considered. We're working on the setting, so existing conditions. We're not looking to publish the EIR for another six months. It's very common for projects to undergo refinement throughout the EIR analysis process. What we're hoping to look at in the EIR is, I sort of hate to use this term, but the worst case, you know, sort of the maximum development potential that is being considered by the project. We're looking at a conceptual development plan with sort of maximum building envelope, maximum square footage for each use, maximum number of residential units. So that, that if there are continued refinements throughout the EIR process, what we would hope to see is that those numbers would go down and we'd be looking at, you know, less severity of impacts or fewer impacts, so that the EIR is going to capture just the most conservative analysis. And there is a risk on the developers, they come back with some sort of radically different plan or, you know, larger square footage or units or whatever, that, that we would have to go back and redo the analysis, either before we publish or as part of response to comments. But that is kind of a very common process. And, and the EIR doesn't look at a very granular level of like specific architectural details or design. So, so those elements can continue to be refined throughout the EIR process as well. And just to touch on cumulative projects, which I know has been brought up a couple of times. So we're, we're looking at the project as it's proposed within the project site. We will analyze the effects of the project compared to baseline or existing conditions. And then we will also look at the project's impacts in light of cumulative impacts and cumulative development. We'll work with the city to be sure that we've captured North Gate Walk or whatever other projects, whether they be development projects or infrastructure improvement projects or roadway projects into the cumulative analysis. I hope that's helpful.
So what you're saying here is that, so I think what we picked up on during the discussion was that there's sort of a lack of clarity as to what the project plans are. But what you're suggesting here is that in the typical EIR process, those plans may change anyway in a project and that the analysis that's done is updated to reflect that.
If necessary. I mean, our goal before we begin now, the analysis is to, to look at sort of the worst case maximum.
Yeah.
So that continued refinements aren't, aren't going to affect our analysis in that new impacts could be identified.
Okay. So, so just, just to add further clarity, so, and please correct me if I'm incorrect here. So there are some components of the EIR. So for example, the traffic study, potentially the electricity, the water impacts, et cetera, which can be, can be done without necessarily, with just the knowledge, for example, of the number of units or the proposed number of, of residents, without necessarily having a finalized architectural plan. And that given, given that, you can also then do various, either scenario planning or sensitivity analysis to understand, you know, for example, if we have a max 5,000 units or 5,000 residents versus 2,000, what does that look like, et cetera?
Sure, absolutely.
If I could just clarify one thing, by looking at the worst case scenario, the EIR is evaluating the impact, the environmental impact. So it's not a land use entitlement. So by, in, by looking at the worst case scenario, it's not saying, well, now that's going to be approved. What it ensures is that we adequately mitigate any impact. By doing the worst, your mitigations are going to be greater. So just, just keep that in mind, because I heard a little bit of a confusion perhaps about that as well.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
I mean, I, obviously I'm, I think I'm the outlier here possibly, but I just think that it's a bad idea to put the cart before the horse or whatever you want to call it. Look, even look at the worst case scenario, because it's just, it's scary to everyone, right? Why not look at what people want and base your, the EIR on that? I mean, that's the way I would do it. I mean, it seems like the way we're doing it now, looking at the worst case scenario, we're just going to create a lot of anxiety and possibly create a lot of argument, you know? Why not, why not create a key that fits a lock, right?
You're, you're, you're not on this limb completely alone. I'm a little bit at a loss to understand why, if the revised version is three to four weeks away, we're considering this right now and, and why we aren't waiting. I mean, I'm not necessarily advocating that we postpone it, but I, I don't fully understand why the process is happening this way, given that revisions are three to four weeks away. this way, given that revisions are three to four weeks away. I think from a comfort and optics perspective, it'd be very helpful to have those before we move ahead.
So from, from, from my understanding, at least this is, it seemed like Teresa confirmed this, is that, I think to the first point about waiting for the plan that everybody wants, the reality is that even if we did come up with a plan that everybody wants, that perfect unicorn plan, which doesn't exist, but let's say that it did exist, there would still need to be an A, B, C type of scenario that's analyzed. Because we may uncover that there are, you know, environmental issues that if we were to change something, some component by 10% or 20%, that that might be mitigated. So even in the, even in the case of like, we, we're seeking the, the, the plan that everybody agrees on, there would still need to be sort of the scenario analysis for that, from, from what I'm understanding for, for the, for the projects. I think from a, you know, from a, from a timing perspective, you know, like I said before, you know, we can, you know, we, we can, we can look to, we can look to wait a month or so, but you know, I, I do want to balance, I do want to balance the fact that A, the EIR process has already started. And so there are components that can be done without necessarily having the, you know, aesthetic plans, et cetera, completed. You know, for example, certain traffic studies, like you can conduct traffic impact studies simply by knowing like the, the volume of, of residents. And if you have various scenarios, you can, you can do that study without necessarily having to wait for finalized plans. So I think we also need to be mindful of like, what are the components that absolutely have to be there to complete the study? Versus what are the components that, you know, since not all parts of the study are going to be done at once? Like there are various different impact areas that are going to be assessed. Do we need to halt the entire process if there are some components that we can do regardless of what the completed plans are right now? That's, that's kind of the, the gist that I'm understanding. Please correct me, Teresa, Leslie, if I'm, if I'm misunderstanding something.
Yeah, I just want to remind the commission tonight, we're doing exactly what we should be doing. We're accepting the public comments, which there was great comment. And now we're directing staff and the team to consider them and come back to us with the revised plans that the applicant will have to work on based off of the comments. So I would actually say slowing everything down would be counter to what we or Commissioner Privatoli wants. If you stopped, then we would be putting it back into the applicant to figure it out on their own, removing this public setting to allow the public to say, hey, applicant, why don't you think of these alternatives? So that's really where we're at right now, which is this is the first level of alternatives that they should be considering. What the public presented, what we as a commission should hopefully be doing is when they come back, making sure those alternatives were considered. So whether it's smaller, whether it's no project, whether it's another project, whether it's changing the phasing, all of that should be considered. So I think the disservice to the community would be if we see the next iteration of this comeback ignoring any of the comments that have been raised. So that's, that's how I see it.
That, that makes sense to me. You know, I, I don't want to sound too extremist, but you know, the plan that, you know, we're looking at right now, that the EIR, EIR is going to be based on is actually not the worst case scenario. The worst case scenario is 2,000 units, right? With, with less, even less open space and, and whatnot. So I guess one question I, I just want to clarify is, you know, how is this plan that we're looking at now, the worst case scenario?
I think there may be some confusion as to what we're referring to in worst, worst case scenario.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't use that. To me, it's confusing. To me, it's what are the impacts on the different proposals that submitted? And what, what are the highest impacts, right? So is this the, you're right, they could go 20 stories high and seek a plan amendment and a zoning change. And all of these, you know, they could. So it really becomes a feasibility to Chair Samucci. I don't even know if you're chair anymore, man. Is it, should it be Chair Privatoli now? Anyways, I think there's a, there's a feasibility component again that I think will be addressed. So to your point, you're right. I mean, it, it could be, you know, another argument could be that keeping it in the existing status with sort of this limited economic vitality could be equally as detrimental to the community. So, but again, that's not our, at least in, I don't believe that, that's my role to make that analysis. It's to make sure that the scoping of this project is analyzing all of that. And if they believe that this is the project to advance, that any of the environmental impacts are properly mitigated or addressed. So that's to me, that, that's how I focus tonight, which were again, those items raised by the community of these seem to be impacts and concerns, I'm hoping this EIR addresses that.
Makes sense.
I'm sorry if I'm hogging. I don't mean to be. I'll go on mute.
No, no, that's, it's all good. Some of the other commissioners who haven't said to, I guess Commissioner Saudi recused herself. Commissioner Harris, do you have any other additional thoughts that you want to throw in?
Not, I mean, they're not original thoughts. It's just, this seems like a very contentious issue and there seems to be a lot of involvement from the public. Yeah, this is just the first time I've ever seen this much involvement and discussion on an issue. So just taking it all in.
Yeah. Okay, I mean, this was, this is a pretty good discussion. Any, any last, any last thoughts?
I'll just share a couple that I wrote down that actually has to do with scoping. So, and I'll try to be brief. So I, I think it would be good for the EIR to consider the 2040 general plan and also the Northern San Rafael Promenade Plan. I'm, I'm wondering if, you know, the idea of ownership is in the scope of work of the EIR. If it is, I think that's an important thing to consider because I think if all the, you know, I'm, I personally am very much in favor of having a good portion of the units being owned and also more three bedroom units. So we can, you know, support families and create a pathway to ownership and reduce sort of like the churn that a lot of communities have, like San Francisco, that have like really a lot of very dense housing markets, or sorry, rental markets. I love the idea, the ideas that a number of the public mentioned about more recreational spaces, more open spaces. I noticed that, I, I don't know if we've heard of, I, if, if we've heard very much from Galinas Watershed Council before, but they had a very good letter that talked about reintroducing some of the natural streams that went through the site that feed into the Galinas Watershed. So I think it'd be great for the EIR to look into that. Obviously, there's the, the lighting consideration. I don't know if that was talked about by the public today, but that was mentioned a couple of times. So try to, try to understand and reduce the impact of lighting at night, right? Obviously, it's traffic already talked about. There was a speaker who, who talked about the missing middle, which again is another reference to housing. Basically like those, those townhomes or three bedroom units, that is missing. The missing middle is missing from this proposal, unfortunately. Let me see here. If there's anything else that popped out and might, that pops out in my notes. Yeah, obviously the benefit of having a town, a town square. I think that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Okay. So just to keep in mind the, and thank you Commissioner Mercato for kind of pointing out the specific scope of the commission for this matter here is what we're looking at is accepting public comment and directing staff to prepare a draft EIR. So let's start thinking about motions around that specific topic that, that we want to put forward.
Um, it just, there's no need for a motion. Sorry if I had that in the script.
Okay.
Just individual comments are fine every and all, as you've been doing, it's most awesome. Thank you.
Okay, so is there, is there anything that we're actually having a vote on then?
Nope, sorry.
Okay.
Yep, just what you're doing, keep at it.
Okay, all right. All right then, so then, then there's nothing for us to formally approve. So I, I think, so I guess incoming Chair Privatoli put together a pretty nice list there of, of items. I guess, would it be appropriate, Leslie, if we, what I want to just get is a an attestation or affirmation from applicant or whomever is speaking on their behalf that they have at least received the message here? I'm sure that we're going to be providing them with some sort of record of, of these notes as well, correct?
Yes, they are actually in attendance and they are here and they are hearing you. And staff has heard you as well. So thank you all for your comments. So yeah.
Okay, any, any last words?
Leslie, are there any questions, Leslie, from either you or, or the Teresa or, or Tricia? Before we close this item?
None for me.
None for me. Thank you.
Okay. So we will smoothly close out that item and I believe that that is our, that is our last item before director's report.
Yes. Okay. So again, to everyone who participated, thank you. And there is, if you have more to say or want to recap what you did say and put it in writing, if you have not already, please do. We are gathering all the comments. We are listening. We are collating and we are going to be responding. So again, thank you for your participation. Onto the director's report. I do not have an official director's report. Typically report on city council, which has not met yet this, this year. They will be meeting next week. I do not know if I did report last time that we did bring forward a presentation on SB nine to city council in December. Did I report that? So I know some of you are missing anyway. So as a recap, SB nine allows ministerial approval, which means there is no discretion. Means you can just go for a building permit. For all single family zone properties that meet certain conditions that are listed in the law, which is, you know, I, I don't know what they are, you know, that you can't be a historic resource. You can't have, use the LS Act to evict tenants. You know, there's a certain list of criteria to have you qualify. You're allowed to do a duplex, two units by rights. You are also allowed to do a lot split, making your single lot into two lots and have a duplex on each unit. So we have moved forward with council, allowing us to implement guidelines, which are pretty much outlined in the state law. And, and also to move forward with an official ordinance on SB nine to kind of officially codify those areas of not really discretion, but how to respond to those little areas that the state has allowed municipalities to weigh in on. And one of those is whether these units on a lot split are allowed to have ADUs. That is one place where jurisdictions can choose not. So that process will be moving forward this spring. More immediately, we are trying to get just the guidelines for people wishing to submit more information on, you know, what do I need to do? Do I qualify? So if that is of interest, once we get that together, hopefully by the end of this month, I can share it with you. Just, it'll be a mini cheat sheet of, of SB nine. So that is what we're moving forward on. And there will be more to report, not just on that, but as the year moves forward. I don't know if you all or any of you have any questions.
It's clear for me.
Okay. And I also just wanted to say, Chair Samucci, thank you so much for your, the happier I got to enjoy your chairmanship and thank you. And I look forward to Chair Privatoli and five stars, so thank you.
I'll second that. Great job.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman.
Yep, thanks very much.
It's been fun.
All right. Do any PC members have any communications? Anything you'd like to share?
I'll just say briefly that we had our first meeting of the housing element. And there's really nothing to report because it was mostly just a meet and greet. But obviously, you know, it's, it was, it was fun to get to know some of the other participants in the Housing Element Working Group. So our next meeting is on the 20th. There's a lot of research that was shared with us by the city that we are reviewing and there's some homework that we're supposed to do. Bring some ideas to this meeting that I mentioned is going to be on the 20th. So that's an update.
Cool. Anyone else? Nope. All right. Have a good night. Meeting adjourned.
Good night. Well, everybody.
Thank you.